Okay, the time is now one o'clock. We'll call the meeting the order and we'll start with the pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will now call to order the Community Crossings Matching Grant Bid Opening. So we did receive three bids, so if you want to pass it. So I have a bid from First Brooks Construction for the total for the project being eight hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred forty-four and sixty cents.
This bid is from Fenton Brown Incorporated. And the total amount of bids is one million two hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
I have E and B paving, and there's this one million five hundred and five thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents.
Can you repeat that one again?
One million five hundred and five thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents.
I would entertain a motion to take bids under advisement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. And opposed the same, then that passes. You may move on. Okay, first item on the regular agenda is an update from Dale Book with our Economic Development Corporation.
Good afternoon. Couple of things I'm still working on. Obviously, still broadband. Haven't heard yet from the broadband office, but there is still some other grant opportunities. And I'll be on a call a week from today with that and with seeing strategies to kind of see if there's some opportunities. But again, still haven't heard about the grants that we all participated in and the letters of support. Next week, we've got medical device, local Willie County Medical Device Companies. We kind of have a summit, a roundtable here. And that is also to just see how that community's doing, check on their needs, and also, two years ago, there was a thirty million dollar state line item for orthopedics industry. And so we're seeing how we can, you know, how I can help, EDC can help the local medical device community access some of that. Now, it wasn't typical kind of funds for equipment or buildings or whatnot, but it was for help with, you know, kind of ancillary things like getting employees or helping employees or talent attraction and those kind of things. So looking forward to that. Had pretty good response on that. No real updates, you know, between Brad or Ryan or myself about US 30, the base, two or three, I can't remember what it was. They did, NDOT did select an engineering company for that. It wasn't one I had previously heard of. So it's just slowly still moving forward, but really not that we want to report on that. So one of the things been falling, as I'm sure you all have as well, is some of the lawn and property tax and what's that mean as far as for individual communities, especially for ours. I'd seen a spreadsheet. I couldn't really make sense of it. But the other thing too, to keep track of this, is projected two point four billion dollars shortfall in revenue is, I'm sure you're aware of. So obviously, we've got Baker Tilly and those kind of folks following that and others, but it's something a lot of economic development group across the state keeps track of. And so I, you know, I've got, you know, some estimates by economists on what it was, and some of it is just employment, personal income tax. There was also personal, our corporate income tax was down, and, you know, they are looking at some of the tariff issues as well. On the interesting side of the tariff issues, because there's two bridges, you know, about three hours away from here that go into Canada. We've seen, not only, you know, Willie County, but all of northeast Indiana has seen some interest in Canadian companies, particularly in the automotive supply chain, looking at this area to sell them shop. So it's kind of interesting. And I've submitted our show building, the Rogers Property Building, for a couple of them. So that's kind of interesting. Had a really good meeting with a developer out of California, of all places, who loves doing business in Indiana. Has had it with California, was shocked, and is trying to shepherd some of California manufacturing companies. He looked at the property redevelopment acquired, the former Yanar property, was really impressed by that. So I was very encouraged in that.
Yep.
In that, I didn't report this last time, but I've had a chance to do a little bit of marketing work, get in the way of travel. I was in Atlanta and Dallas recently and was able to kind of market Willie County and the available property and buildings that we have here. So it's going well. Indiana's a great reputation for ease of doing business, and it's pleasant to go around and have somebody compliment you on the business environment that we've created here.
I saw a video that you posted or something. It was phenomenal.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I gotta start sharing that video. That turned out pretty well about, you know, why Willie County and what Willie County has to offer. I was just glad I didn't stumble too much, too many hums or y knows or whatever, so.
You did great.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Money hundred called Dale.
Yeah. So that's what we're working on.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is not Jason Meyer with Easter Seals, but we do have Vicki and Stacy here from Easter Seals.
Hi, I'm Vicki Lutens. I'm the Chief Development Officer for Easter Seals.
I'm Stacy Dool. I am the Vice President of Community Supports for Easter Seals. We appreciate you guys allowing us to have a little time today.
Sure.
So we just wanted to share some different updates that have been going on at Easter Seals. If you would please, Vicki, that would be great.
Thank you. Thank you.
So if you're not familiar with Easter Seals, we do offer a variety of services to individuals of all ages with disabilities. So I'm just here to update you on those different services we provide and where we're at. So the first one being is our day services. If you're not familiar, we have the Creative Learning Center here in town. So just some highlights there. We do, we're excited. We're two away from being fully staffed with the CLC for day services. And we do have a supervisor that's going to be joining the team in May to help give some ease to that staffing shortage as well. She'll be split between our Columbia City location and our Angola location just due to budgetary needs. So we're excited for that. And then we are anticipating getting back into First Fridays coming as that opens back up with the season change in the farmers market. So our instructor Amanda was hosting that previously last summer, gave our participants the ability to have some artwork out in the community and share what we're up to. So we're excited to get that back up and running. We have been able to, despite the staffing shortage, which I'm sure everybody is feeling, we've been able to get participants out in about forty-five percent active engagement in the community. And we want to see more and more of that. Our goal long-term is to not be in that facility. We want to be a part of the community. So some ways that we're doing that is we are right now working with the First Church of God. We go and volunteer there. We try to get there weekly. Sometimes we have some issues with either illness. It felt like everybody was sick in some form or another in February. And when you got done with one thing, it kicked in with the next thing. So some struggles there. I'm sure you've all felt that. And then we also volunteer weekly at the YMCA, trying to get out to do those sorts of things. One new thing that we've started doing is an à la carte option. So for some families, they didn't really want to have their loved one come every day of the week to a day services setting. They just kind of want to hit or miss. So we do offer that. We offer programs such as ballroom dance, karate, group music therapy, art classes, and R E S gaming, as well as social groups. If you're not familiar with the R E S gaming, it's a sport arena. I did not know that gaming could be a sport arena until within the last year or so, Vicki.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it is just amazing what it has done for some of our participants. So we actually have one participant who, we have the R E S gaming also, Paige is our instructor for that. And so she is there every Wednesday teaching the game to a bunch of participants that come in and enjoy it and they love it. So this participant was very much self-isolating. He was always on his phone. That's all that he was doing. He was playing the games. He loved the comfort that it brought to him and the lack of chaos, because it's very much rule-driven. This is what you're doing. So when Paige came, he could relate to Paige, right? He could, like Paige is a gamer. So he's like, okay, she's not just here to tell me what to do. She's here to be a gamer with me. So we have seen a change in that personality. He now is making friends. He reaches out to other people, gives them high fives, fist bumps. So it's been a phenomenal change for that individual, and we're super excited for that for him. And then also with our day services, we had another participant who started recently, who was very minimally able to communicate. Parents had expressed concerns with her being able to use sign language, not being able to communicate when she didn't use the restroom, those sorts of things. So at our day services, she started to learn different signs like no, or I like this, or eat, or bathroom. And so now she's able to communicate when she needs to use the bathroom, and that's translated at home as well. So we're seeing a decrease in the urinary incontinence for her, and the family is thrilled with the fact that it's a transferable skill. So we're excited for that too. Okay. We also have a lot going on with workforce development. So we are, right now, pre-employment transition services for our youth folk rehab. We are working with all the different schools in Whitley County to establish that service. So we do have coordinator here in Whitley County working with those schools. I believe we're at about thirty-seven students so far, and that's, we're up by eleven students since the beginning of the year. So we're excited to be able to impact those individuals' lives and build those employment skills. So for this summer, we've already had ten people from Whitley County apply for our internship and volunteer placement opportunities for the summer. So we're excited to be able to offer that. We also have in coordination with our workforce development, our Opportunity Labs. And that's something that I am so excited, very so excited, Vicki.
I am so excited.
Do you want to share a little? I'm so excited.
Yeah, so our partner in Cosiasko County, Cardinal Services. I have worked with September McConnell at the foundation, Dr. Amy Cora is the new superintendent for community schools and how we can collaborate. We offer under the manufacturing, under Opportunity Lab Manufacturing Hospitality and Healthcare certifications and trainings at Cardinal in Cosiasko County. And then the Career Center in the community, community schools will also have some opportunities where Cosiasko County students can come here. So we're kind of sharing those resources, so we don't have to build two big, huge programs at once. So we're super excited about that. So some of the certifications we have is forklift driving certification, CNA certification, cosmetology. I don't know if you've heard of Safe Surf, but that's hospitality, that's a certification in hospitality that is really important to restaurants for hiring. So all of, and we do have scholarship opportunities as well that, so it's not just for the individuals we serve. We have up to sixty thousand dollars in scholarships, it's a thousand per certification, for students transitioning from school to adult life, as well as individuals in the community in Whitley County that are at risk. So maybe they're not, they're not going to go on to trade school or to college, and maybe there's a financial barrier or substance abuse at home. Well, they can come and possibly get some meat on their resume and have some job opportunities and training through us, so.
So I did just hand out just some information about those labs. I actually had an opportunity to speak with the instructor for the hospitality lab there, I believe in week two, week three. And just was sharing the transformation that he's seeing within the participants coming in. Shared with me that he had one participant that came in and was told right away, like, well, he doesn't really talk. He doesn't talk at home. The parents then were able to come in and just kind of observe how he interacted, the instructor interacted with their son. And after day two, they were fine. They were like, okay, we're out. You're doing great. And this participant now does not stop talking. So total change for that individual, and so we're excited for that opportunity for him. So even if it doesn't necessarily lead to employment in the restaurant industry, if it does lead to employment somewhere in the hospitality industry, that's open. I know that I'm checking for your time. Oh, sorry. No, no, you're good.
I want to be respectful of those.
I do too. So if you guys need me to stop, I will stop.
Oh, no.
I love the topic, so I will just talk a little bit. Shut me down. The next thing that we wanted to touch base on was our support group, living sites or group home locations. So we do have three locations within Whitley County. Currently, we are at sixteen open positions and we need a total of thirty-two team members. So we definitely want to make sure that we're looking for the right candidate. So some things that we're trying to do to boost that employment is we've offered open interviews to applicants where they can come in. We'll do, we'll offer pending a background check, so it's a contingent offer. We currently have also launched an employment campaign, just really showcasing videos of what our staff do. And when you're watching those videos, it's really important to remember that what we do, yes, there are challenging times, but it's also really fun times. So we had a group of participants, I think we ended up having sixty people total, Vicki, come to the comments hockey game on Friday. And so just getting to be able to be a part of the community is huge. And so when you say to somebody, wait, you got paid to go to a comments game? Yeah, got paid to go to a comments game. That's super exciting. So the fun things do come with the challenging things as well. And then we also have our support of living sites. I do want to share that we have, at the beginning of this quarter, in January, we had six sites total. We have closed two of those sites. So if you're familiar with Bright Point, they have an amazing program that they put in place for some time now that they actually will lease a home, and then after a certain amount of time, they'll offer it up at a reduced price for sale to the individual that is leasing the home. So we do unfortunately have individuals that that wasn't something that was in their willhouse budgetarily, so they've had to look at other options for living. But we also have one individual that's taking full, full opportunity, yes, full opportunity, is getting to purchase her own home as of May first. But with that, we do want to recognize again, staffing continues to be a challenge. And so she is going to go to a different provider. So we will be down to fewer sites in the Willie County area. Again, just making sure that the people that are in those homes are having the opportunity to choose what's next in their life, just like we would want the opportunity to do. Is that kind of all the headlines?
I think so.
Is there anything you want to add?
Do you have any questions for us about the services we provide in Whitley County?
Can you talk just briefly a little bit about the contribution that comes from the commissioners and how that's utilized?
Yes, absolutely. So right now, we are using those for operations. In order to, right now, we're on a budget to lose upwards of about three hundred thousand, maybe four hundred thousand dollars annually, which is covered by the subsidiary, or subsidiaries at our Fort Wayne location and Cosiasko County location. So those, those dollars really help us to be able to sustain services. We also know about the million dollar shortfall of our thirty-five million dollar budget for Easter Seals, which covers about, how many counties? Nine? Nine counties? We are looking at about seventy-eight percent that is Medicaid funded. And so we know we're going to see, we're, I shouldn't say we know, we're forecasting that we're going to see some cuts. So that's going to deeper impact our ability to continue sustaining services. We always figure out a way, but I guarantee any donations that we receive, whether it's from an individual, corporation, government, foundation, all go right back into Whitley County operations, so we can serve the community.
Yep.
Thank you, ladies. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you guys very much. We love what we do. Yes, you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda today is the Palosity Human Resources Information System Agreement.
We are not ready for that yet, but we're waiting for Palosity to green light the agreement. Added some language that our ordinance requires. We haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. So push at another meeting?
Yeah, push at another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll move right on to dedication of right of way for Mathewson. Is this you, Ryan? Not you, but.
I'll cover it.
Okay.
So as part of the Mathewsons' variance, which is located on the north side of Collins, Johnson Road, Stairway 205, they have been planning on doing a subdivision platte, and they needed a variance for the lot width. After the variance was granted, based upon the idea of it being platted, we discovered they didn't have to do a platte. So they're not going to go forward with the plating process, but because the variance was granted on the grounds of the right of way being dedicated as part of the grounds for the variance, they needed to proceed with that portion of the whole process. So that's why you have right of way grant in front of you, because otherwise we'd have to go back and revise the variance on a basis. Clear with mud?
Yep. Any questions for Nathan?
I would move to approve the request as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a deed of dedication of public right of way. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed the same, then that passes. Don't go too far, because we'll just go ahead and handle the Lee Jacobs.
Okay. I've got the Mylar for Lee Jacobs addition here, which I'll give to you after the meeting soon and prove it. This is a replat of, of the Lee Jacobs addition, which was platted, I think, back in the early nineteen nineties. All they're doing is splitting the one fire lot into two, that kids want to go next door to them. This is in Sheriff Fusco's ETJ jurisdictional area, so it went through the Sheriff Fusco, Land Commission, Town Council, and it's coming before you because of the fact that this is still a county road and it's front lawn. They had designated county road right of way with the original platte, but because of the way we've changed things over the last twenty years or so, it is now not just designated, but actually dedicated. And so again, like what you normally see with plats, you'd be accepting the dedicated right of way and any additional easements that may be there.
Any questions for Nathan?
I would move to approve the replat of Lot One and Lee Jacob addition as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anything further? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed the same, then that passes. You may move on.
Thank you. Thanks for getting that one.
Is there, is there a copy to sign?
Yeah, I'll get it to you.
Gotcha. Okay, next item on the agenda is the two thousand twenty-six holiday schedule. Has everyone had a chance to review? This is something that we've discussed for quite some time, and, I mean, of course, with election year, it's a little higher than normal. But I'm not sure what you do about that. So I feel comfortable with it as, as presented and prepared to make that vote.
I would move to approve the two thousand twenty-six holiday schedule.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed the same, then that passes. You have a copy again. Ryan, Highway Department Annual Report.
Good afternoon. Hopefully you have a copy of the two thousand twenty-four annual report for the highway department. All right, good. This is important for us to, for me to file every year because it's one of the requirements for, for applying for what we do Cross Crossings matching granted each year. And coming up with HB fourteen sixty on this past, it'll be important for us to have this filed every year also, so we can be able to continue to receive real tax forms. So this information is all pulled from our financial system now. So this information is all pulled from our financial system now. Just if you have to look at it. I don't know if it answers anything for you.
Any questions for Ryan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual operational report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed the same, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And while we're signing, Tara, you're up next.
Good afternoon. Thanks for inviting me here. I just came to talk a little bit about the facility and what we offer to Whitley County here. For those of you that don't know, I'm Tara Myers, the Director at Whitley County Solid Waste. We're the recycling facility located here in town, right next door to the highway. We have a couple exciting things coming up, one of them being our waste tire amnesty that we're having for our second year this year. Residents will be able to bring in up to 25 tires off the rim, nothing over 20 inches, no fee for that during the amnesty. The amnesty is going to run April 28th through May 10th during our normal business hours. So there will be plenty of opportunity to service the community and help clean up waste tires. For anyone that don't know, doesn't know this, GFL is the contractor that actually picks up the recycling here in Whitley County. It's not our facility. Our facility does however handle repairs for bins. So if anyone out there has an issue with a bin, broken wheel lid, call our office and we can get that scheduled and repaired. Miss pickups, you can also reach out to us or GFL and we can resolve the missed pickup issues. Some additional information of things that we take at our office that is no additional cost to residents would be things like electronics, appliances, aerosol cans, any metal, we don't charge for that, fire extinguishers, small propane tanks, sharps, needles, as long as they're in an appropriate sharps container, we take those. Plus, all of the recyclables that you can put in your blue bin curbside. If you have additional needs and have more than what will fit in your bin, you can bring those by. We do ask residents to be understanding. If we do ask for an ID, there's a reason for that. Us making sure that you are a Whitley County resident helps us keep our costs low because we're here to service Whitley County. We're not here to service outside of our county. So if we do ask you for an ID, we just ask that you be understanding of that and present it when asked. We do take trash as well for the county to help keep, you know, the community clean. If you have a need for mattress disposal or couch or, you know, regular garbage, we do take those things, but they do come with a cost and we can work through that with you if you want to give us a call. Paint, we take both latex and oil-based paint at our facility. Latex paint has to be wet. We can't take it once it's dry. The really cool thing about it is it goes to a recycler here in Indiana and it's actually recycled into new paint. So it's not, we're not just taking it and they're burning it or disposing of it in other ways. They're actually taking the latex paint and they're making more paint that's being sold on the shelves. So I think that's really cool. Fluorescent light bulbs, we take fluorescents. We don't take LEDs. Batteries, we take lithium batteries, we take lead acid batteries, any kind of rechargeable battery, button batteries. The only exception would be alkaline. And again, this is all no cost to Whitley County residents. We take fire alarms or thermometers because most people don't realize those do contain a small amount of mercury in them, which needs to be properly disposed of. So you can bring those into us, no cost to get rid of them. Waste oil and antifreeze is another service we offer and take at no cost for Whitley County residents. Any kind of chemicals, household chemicals, your herbicides, your pesticides, anything like that, bleach. You have something that you didn't quite use up and you need to dispose of. Don't dump it down the drain. Bring it into us and we'll get rid of it. I can't think of anything else. Do you guys have any questions for me?
And your hours are?
Our hour, good question. Our hours Monday through Friday are 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And we're open Saturdays also, 8:00 a.m. to noon. Holidays do affect that, but we follow the same schedule that the county approves. So if you need to know when we're closed, if the county's closed, we're closed.
And what about businesses? You've hit a lot on residents, but what about businesses?
Yeah, good question. So businesses can actually use our facility also, but businesses have to pay to use our facility. So, and to expand on that, residents outside of our community can also use our facility, but we pay them or they pay us to take that product for them since they don't live in our community. So yes, businesses can use us. They have to pay for what they bring in. So can out-of-county residents. They just have to pay for what they bring in. And we have pricing and stuff listed for businesses and for out-of-county residents on the website.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Tara.
Any questions for Tara? Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Okay, the next item on the agenda today is the payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I went up earlier this morning and looked over payroll and accounts payable. I would move to approve payroll.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes unanimously.
In claims, I had a couple questions. We talked it over and I know I filled you guys in, so I would move to approve claims.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve claims. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that motion carries unanimously. I also have a request to use county facilities. This request came in from Gregory Shore, what the organization calls DJ Greg. And it looks like Greg is wanting to do, he wants to perform at the courthouse and use the gazebo lawn and also would like to have some food. So this request would be for May 1st and from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And security, maintenance, and health department looks have reviewed. Maintenance has no concerns with the request. Security did address one concern. It's not noted what the concern is, but I think it has something to do with the requester and I don't know how to say this, but maybe some criminal behavior against county properties in the past that security wanted to highlight and make sure that we consider. And then of course, the health department brought up a need for food permits. So I don't know if you...
Has he been convicted of damaging public property in the past?
Yes, he has been.
Okay. I mean, you could certainly consider that if you wanted to.
So as far, on the number of participants, it says one DJ. I'm not even sure what else. And then one other thing that I don't know if they thought of, but they need to coordinate trash with the city if they're going to be having food. So I think with these issues and I guess some prior issues with damaging public property, I wouldn't agree with her.
I guess you guys know more than me. I've never heard of that guy or dealt with him, so.
I mean, for me, I could go either way. Like I hear what you're saying about coordinating with the city. I think the city has their own approval process and so of course it would be their, it would be the Requestor's obligation or responsibility to go through the approval process with the city as well for anything that goes beyond the sidewalk. And so in this case, I think it's county because it's the gazebo and the yard.
I agree with that stance, but it's our property and if there's nowhere to dispose it, it's going to go on.
Yeah.
The courthouse lawn. So I would move to deny the request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny the request. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed the same, and that passes. Still consent has been denied. Meeting minutes. This would be for our April 7th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review?
I have. I've been looked accurate to my recollection, so I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve minutes. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed the same, and that carries unanimously. Andy Hewitt sent an email about a conversation about disposal of government property.
Yep, so I think there's a proposal about doing an ordinance or a resolution, put in place a process to dispose of unneeded property, which I think is a good idea. There's a statutory threshold of the amounts you're allowed to dispose of without publishing it, so that's clear too. The question I had is how do you want to handle it? Do you want to have a process whereby you appoint Kami, for example, to kind of be the disposing agent? And anytime the property is under that threshold of statutory value, she can sell it and dispose of it? Do you want it to come before you each time she wants to sell something? Or do you want to kind of dedicate her to, or someone, to be able to kind of dispose of property like that when it's, I think, a thousand dollars or 1,500 individually? It's a small amount. So anything else would require a statutory process to sell, but do you want to kind of put in a process to get rid of smaller stuff?
I like that idea.
So this came up, I think, because we currently do something called Friday freebies. And there's been a lot of question recently about like, what can you do with a Friday freebie? Are you allowed to keep it for your personal use and take it home? Or does it have to be used for your department? And so we started to explore that. That's kind of what's driving this conversation. I think that, I think there was one example of like a county who had purchased something that was new in the box but never utilized and then it was determined that it wouldn't be, so it was offered in a Friday freebie. And so then it was, it was kind of discussed internally like, well, what would be the most proper thing to do? Would it be to try to sell on gov deals? Or would it be to, you know, offer up as a Friday freebie? And then we had to define like, is it okay for that person that claims it in a Friday freebie to take that property home? So in any case, with Friday freebies, it's never been anything that is of high value. And I don't know how we would determine value of an old desk, for example, like a 1990s desk or a broken office chair or, you know, like none of these things really have value. And from my view, I have no problem if somebody could use this at a nonprofit or at a, even in their home or whatever. But we just want to make sure that we're doing it properly.
So do you still want it to be a Friday freebie or is this actually to sell things?
Well, I think it would be a combination where, you know, there may be, from time to time, we discover that something does have value, which we have. For example, we've had an excess of county-owned cell phones and we used 4EOS to assign a value to that technology. And then we auctioned off to all county employees. We afforded them the opportunity to pay the value that 4EOS, our IT provider, assigned to the phones or I think in a couple cases iPads or tablets. And so I think it's a combination. To answer your question, it's a combination. Sometimes it has value and we'll sell it. Sometimes it doesn't. But we're trying to follow a proper process to make sure that we're not buying something new in box and then giving it away. That didn't seem proper to me. But it had been owned long enough that you couldn't return it. So, you know, that's what's driving this.
Okay, I get it. I could put together a proposal of how to handle that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if I've missed anything, Kami, Jenny, you're here. And a lot, you know, again, a lot of this has come from me just questioning and maybe others questioning. And I don't want to put any added pressure on the two of you, but if anything's been missed, you can chime in or even it would be appropriate for you to have an active role in this conversation as well.
And you've been great about working with me and we've been contacting state work accounts on things we're unsure of. And our biggest piece was kind of back to the clothing thing that we would need to tax that employee for that product. So that's something to keep in mind too, that it may have to go on their W-2 like we do for if we allow clothing. They just have to be taxed on certain things.
Sure.
Other than that, they said as long as there's a policy or something in place that we follow, we're good.
Yeah. Did I hit everything on that? You did.
I can propose a policy and we can, yeah, okay.
A policy proposal will be good.
Got it.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. If anyone would like to come forward today and speak, now would be the time. Hearing no public comment, is there anything you'd like to add, Tiffany?
No, other than the audit's underway for 2024, tax bills went out, a lot of people coming in. And I know that there's been a lot of changes with the SV1. Once we get formal approval from the state of what they're doing, I will make sure to try to get out for public any deductions that have been changed in any sort of way. I know the over 65 is a big one, the veteran deduction, they're making a lot of changes. So we'll make sure to try to communicate that out because it's for taxes you're going to pay next year.
Okay. Commissioner Seaman, anything to add?
Yeah, I would say last week, late last week, we had a, and I think I speak for all three of us when I say we had a department head that's been tremendously respected and a great asset to the county, has entered a phase of life where she's exploring other opportunities. And she leaves, Amy Biggs, the foreign director of the emergency management agency, she leaves on tremendous terms. And I believe that healthy organizations develop their own leadership from within, and that's the case here. Former deputy director Ed Scott was more than ready to step right into that director's role and I believe wholeheartedly that he's going to do a tremendous job. And we're very fortunate to have him in place and we wish Amy nothing but the best in her future endeavors.
Commissioner Bates, anything to add?
I do have one thing and Dale, maybe you can help me on it. So I'm on the redevelopment commission as the commissioners appointment. And the property that we recently acquired had some buildings, some of them, the local fire departments are going to be using them as like live trainings, are going to set them on fire and put them out and all that. But there is this really unique barn and Dale, I don't know if you can help me sort of describe it, I guess, but we're trying to figure out what we can do with it. It does have enough value that it would make sense to move it somewhere. We've already looked into the 4H, they unfortunately don't have a need for it nor do they have funds to care for the building after the fact. What we're wanting to do is donate it to a local nonprofit that could possibly use it. But we keep running into the issue of not finding anyone who can utilize it. I do think the redevelopment commission would be open to paying for the relocation of it as long as the nonprofit could pay for maintenance on it, whatever that might be. So if anyone knows of a local nonprofit that could possibly use... Nathan, do you, like, what makes the barn so special? I'm sorry, I know it's got some unique qualities as to why we don't want to demolish it.
It's a very large, hand-hewn bank barn, probably from the 1860s, early 1870s. Still has the bark on the timbers. The main beam is one 50-foot-long log, which is very uncommon to find anymore. And it's pristine condition. It was covered in metal many years ago, so the wood underneath is immaculate. And so it's great condition.
And we did have the Indiana Barn Foundation come out, and they rated it, and on their scale, it was rated as excellent. If I remember, it was in like the top 5% of condition. So that was it. If you know of any local nonprofit that could use it, please reach out to me or Dale or Nathan. I guess me, since I'm the one who just offered all of that, so, thank you.
Has there been any consideration of selling it? I know there's barn buyers.
Yes, we, what we really want, well, we wanted to keep it in the community originally, so we immediately looked at 4H as something. And, you know, we wanted to offer to pay to move it. However, they're not in the position of being able to acquire it at this point. The treasurer came and spoke on that. So then at that point, we do have one person who's wanting to have it donated to them. And it sounds like they make things and give them away for like auctions and whatnot that are, that raise money for good causes. However, I think the majority of the board would really like to see it donated versus taking it down. There's a little, a lot of unknowns on this person, company, that makes things. And I guess they don't make anything. So personally, I would like to see the barn moved and preserved in Whitley County.
Yeah.
If at all possible, so that's where we're at. But selling it, we've talked about that with Andy. We can put it on, there's a certain state statute that we have to follow on bidding and whatnot. But I don't know, that also makes me a little nervous, too, that maybe it won't sell for hardly anything and then, then we lost the barn to someone from wherever, so.
Okay, anything else? Just two things from me. I'll be absent at the next meeting. I'll be traveling for my daughter's college graduation. And then also, special thanks to law enforcement, medical professionals, dispatchers, what they dealt with, the events yesterday, are not unique to their jobs. And I don't, I don't know that we thank them enough. And so I just wanted to call that out and thank them for the work that they do, day in and day out. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.